Work session of the Salisbury City Council. Just a couple of quick announcements, if you have a cellphone, if you please put it on vibrate or silent, or turn it off, or throw it out the window if you like. It's, might be a welcome relief. In case of an emergency, the exits are through this door. You can turn right, there are stairs all the way down on the right, or if those are blocked for some reason, you can go all the way around to the left, past the elevators, and keep going, and you'll run into another set of stairs for a quick exit. Please don't use the elevators. So, our first item, our guest is not here, so we will move right into the second item, and start out ahead of the time a little bit. And we'll welcome Brandon Brittingham to discuss the findings of the foreclosure task force.
Are you ready? Okay.
And we have Councilman Heath joining us by phone, we just had a little technical difficulty reaching him.
Are you there? Hello, Jack?
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Thanks. Thank you.
Are you there?
Thank you.
Hello, Jack?
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for joining us. That's okay. We'll just put this away for now. I'm just passing. I'm so sorry. It's okay. There we go. It's ringing now. I feel like Lily Tong was one ringy dingy.
Hello?
Oh, here we go.
There you go.
Hello? Okay. You're coming in loud and clear now.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Brittingham with us to talk about the foreclosure task force and their findings. Welcome.
Thanks, um, thanks for letting me be here today. First of all, let me just give you guys a little bit of a background, kind of why we we put this task force together. I've worked, when things were really bad, direct with the United States Treasury Department, Bank of America, Fannie, Freddie, kind of all the big names that were part of the foreclosure crisis. And kind of worked on different capacities with them, to try to work on a, kind of a national solution, to help more people not go into foreclosure. On a local level, in a state level, Maryland, you know, was one of the hardest-hit places. Locally, we were hit extremely hard, from a foreclosure standpoint. So, the point of, of why we put the task force together was to kind of look at where we're at right now, and then kind of look at where we're going. And, anything that we thought that we could do, that was realistic, that didn't require funding, that we could kind of help people in the local area, kind of get out of that situation, or get them more educated on it. So, a couple of things, I'll go through with you guys before we talk about actually what our findings are, because it's important to have an understanding of where we're at right now. And, that's in the report. DHCD puts out a quarterly report, every quarter, of foreclosure filings in the state, and it's actually extremely comprehensive. And it gives a window of what's going on in the state, and then it breaks it down to the actual local level. So, if you look on page one, the second paragraph, it talks about the state's foreclosure rate, Maryland as a state, was 116% above the, the national average. So, for Q2, or, I'm sorry, for Q1, 2015, Maryland as a state was actually ranked second in the country for foreclosure activity, which is, you know, pretty severe. And, just as a comparison, Delaware was ranked 45th in the nation. So, even though they're, they're that close, they weren't having the same effect as, as Maryland did. And, if you go to page two, it says two at the bottom, it, it kind of gives you an overview. It says chart one, total foreclosure activity in Maryland. So, if you look at the beginning, it breaks it down by quarters, back to 2009, because 2009 is like when we were in the height of foreclosure filing, and foreclosure activity as a state. And if you look at Q3 and Q4, the two highest quarters, and then you go to Q4 of 14, quarter four, the fourth quarter of 2014, was similar in activity to when we were at the absolute height of the foreclosure crisis. So, that's a, you know, that's an indication that there's still a significant amount of activity out there, and it's still very prevalent. One of the things that's part of that, is if you follow this chart, and you see where it dips, that's because, if you remember, Maryland put a halt on all foreclosures. And part of what you're seeing now, is, you know, kind of them turning the faucet back on.
Right.
Which is good and bad, because the, the negative side to that is, more houses go to foreclosure. It affects the neighbor's value around them, creates blight and deteriorous property values. And then, also, you can see, down at the bottom of page two, where it showed Maryland's ranking as second, and the foreclosure rate was 50.2, which was almost double the national average of 23.7. And, you know, Maryland as a state, the effect, all over the state, has an effect locally. So, looking at it from a state perspective, it certainly has an effect on us locally. And if you go to page four, you'll see a map of Maryland, and it shows you kind of the foreclosure events by county. And as you can see, Wycomico County, part of Wycomico County, has a very dark shaded area. That's an indication of an extremely high foreclosure rate, for that particular quarter. And, if you go to page five, next page, have a little chart at the bottom there, and it shows 2014, quarter one, and that's one, two, three, four, five, fifth to the last on the chart. It had, the notice of defaults, was the highest since, even before the crisis, and during the crisis. The highest we ever had was 2014, quarter one. What a notice of default is, is that means the bank has notified the court system that someone's behind on their mortgage. So, quarter one of 2014, we had the highest spike we've ever had in the state. So, that's an indication of, unfortunately, we still have a pretty significant wave of foreclosures that are still coming. And again, part of that can be a little bit artificial, because of, the numbers were down when they stopped, and now they're pushing them through. But nevertheless, that still has the same effect on the community. Some of the other stuff is just in there for reference, there's just specific things I wanted to point out to you guys. If you go to page 10, it shows Wycomico County is the second to last, that in Q1, the lenders' purchases of foreclosed properties was up 114%. And what that basically means is, there's going to be a significant amount of foreclosed properties that the lenders have taken back. They're going to come, come into our community. Obviously, if it was up 114%, that's pretty significant.
The next page- It says 88, that's the real number.
The next page is, the eight, yeah, the, the number of transactions. So, yeah, Q1, it was 88 purchases. And to put that in perspective, in Wycomico County, we typically have between 500 to 600 properties on the market at any given time. So, if you put close to 100 foreclosures on top of that, that's a substantial amount of market share, in comparison to how many active properties we have, you know, going off today's numbers. And, if you go to the next page, I won't get into how this, how they calculate it. You guys can look at it for your own reference, it just talks about what they consider a foreclosure hotspot, and how they calculate that index. And then if you go to page 14, Wycomico County is listed as a foreclosure hotspot, and that its rate is 109, index is 115. What that basically means is, that Wycomico County is between 109 to 115% above the state average for foreclosures per capita. So, that's a pretty substantial number, going off of the Q1 numbers. And then again, it gives you the distribution of foreclosure hotspots in Maryland, the next page, and you can see Wycomico County is shaded as a extremely high area as well. And then, the last page, if you go to page 22, where it actually goes into some actual areas, it's got Delmar, Hedren, Salisbury, Salisbury, as high foreclosure hotspots by community in Q1.
So, we've not seen the worst of it. I mean, the, the end of it, I should say.
Yeah, so, based on, if you look at everything as a whole, there's still a substantial amount that's out there. If you guys happen to drive around, and you pay attention as you're riding around neighborhoods, I'm sure you can see the vacant properties with the notices on them, things of that nature. And again, this is based off of information that we have. One of the things that I worked on in Prince George's County, which happened to be the, it still is the highest concentration of, of foreclosures, was in the top 10 in the country, we actually got funding to do some market research, and what we found was, the actual numbers were about 15 to 20% more than what we knew. Because, the information that DHCD gathers, is only based on when a bank files on somebody.
Right.
So, the reality of it is, I know of people who have been delinquent on their mortgage for a significant period of time, and the bank doesn't file foreclosure on them. So therefore, you don't really know the numbers, until it actually becomes a court case. And, in reality, it may not be that accurate, because, you know, according to legally, when some, when a bank can file foreclosure, versus how long somebody's actually been behind, could be two different things.
Right.
Meaning, somebody could be behind for a year, and the bank doesn't decide to file a foreclosure case against them until the 13th month. But technically, they could have followed it a lot sooner. So, we found that the numbers are actually always a little bit higher than what DHCD actually produces. And, you know, just kind of based on, just giving you guys an overview of kind of where we're at, you know, one of the things that I thought was really alarming to me, when I worked on this, on a national and on a statewide level, was that 70% of people who were in some type of foreclosure situation, I mean, this is actually, actually a NAR statistic in a NAR survey, National Association of Realtors, 70% of people in the height of foreclosure process that lost their house to foreclosure, were unaware that they had another option besides going to foreclosure. So, even today, with as prominent it has been in the media, what we still see, is that it's an extremely misunderstood situation, misunderstood process, and most people that are in this situation have absolutely no clue what to do, and they kind of throw their hands up and they walk away. And, kind of our ideology behind the task force was, we thought there's two things that we could achieve, and that's scalable. The biggest thing is education, because education can lead to prevention. And we also agree, from a standpoint, that a lot of people are unaware of Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, they're unaware of what it is, that the, the ability that they can, you know, what they can do to help somebody that's in a foreclosure situation. So, we kind of focused on those two areas, because we thought that, you know, that's where we could really, kind of make some headway, and actually, you know, achieve some results. And, we thought about, one of the things that came out of one of the task force meetings was, we thought we could put something on the water and sewer bills, because everybody's going to look at that. Because another thing too, is what we found is, so if someone's, you know, in foreclosure, or they're in a situation where they're in trouble, a lot of times, anything that comes in the mail that's related to that, they don't open it, they don't look at it. Because it's, it's an extremely horrific situation for somebody to be in. And they're, honestly, they're embarrassed. So, one of the things we talked about is, you know, we would put something on the water bills, sewer bills that go out, just says, if you know someone's facing foreclosure, and, you know, or if you need help, or someone you know is facing foreclosure, something to that effect, and give them SNHS's contact information. Because the national statistics still is now, that one in seven people know somebody that's in this situation. And if we're in a smaller community like this, and you have the kind of numbers we're talking about, it's probably like one in five. Doesn't necessarily mean that one in five is in that situation, but one in five knows somebody who's in the situation.
Right.
So, you know, we thought, ra- raising the level of awareness, that there's an organization like SNH, SNHS that can assist when a consumer needs their assistance, and that we could implement educational pieces, to put on city and county websites, you know, kind of linking back to SNHS. Because there's a lot of people, I'm in the real estate business, I sell houses for a living, but I've done a lot of work on foreclosure prevention, and doing short sales, and trying to help people out of foreclosure. A lot of people come to me, and the first thing I say to them is, have you talked to SNHS? And they say, who's SNHS? We've never heard of them. So, you know, we, we kind of thought we really needed to raise the bar on awareness and education. You know, we talked about using the city and county social media channels to raise awareness for the campaign, let citizens know that they have an outlet for help, and even taking that farther, you know, engaging with the local media, to make the public aware, you know, talk radio, TV interview, things of that nature. Because I've actually done, we actually did a talk radio show with a couple nonprofits in Prince George's County, where, I mean, you had literally like 1,500 people were calling in, once they heard it. So, there's, you know, because some of it is on a federal level, as far as the issues to fix it, it's very difficult. You know, we, we can't change the process on Fannie Mae, Bank of America. Unfortunately, I, I actually tried.
Yeah.
We did make some headway with-
Thanks for trying.
With, with US Treasury. But, you know, we, we found that, in, in a, especially a small community like ours, a grassroots effort can affect and reach a lot of people. Social media channels, you know, city, county, websites, and kind of making them aware of, you have this great organization like Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, that's trained on these type of processes. And, if Salisbury Neighborhood Housing doesn't have the, you know, solution for it, then they can bring someone like, in like me, who can help them with a short sale situation. Or, if it's a situation where we got to bring an attorney in, because none of us can help them, you know, the state has pro bono attorneys. And Salisbury Neighborhood Housing is in that loop of, you know, the statewide process of what you can do, and what you can't do. And we've worked, I've worked in tandem with Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, on situations where we had a bank just simply say, no, we're not going to help these people, and we climbed the appropriate channels, and together, we were able to, to work something out, and prevent somebody from going to foreclosure. And again, that's what we thought, based on the scale of the problem, to be able to do it in a reasonable amount of time, and actually have an impact, you know, that's kind of what we, we felt are some things that we could do, and, and actually get some impact in a short period of time.
Okay, so, you've done the, the talk show, the call-in talk shows, and would you be willing to do that with some of our, our local stations?
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, or someone from the group?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd, I'd be more than happy to do it. You know, obviously, we'd certainly want to include SNHS on anything we do-
Sure.
-because there's, there's, you know, loan modification, a deed and loan foreclosure, a short sale, you know, all these things are different processes, and, you know, we're all experts in our individual fields, and we can't, we, like, I'm, me as an individual can't offer every option.
Sure.
SNHS can't offer every option, but we can together, basically offer every option.
Right. I'm thinking some of the other places that I've, I've heard and seen things done, is like, open houses for return to school.
Yeah.
That there's a table there, and, and people can, can grab things. Not with the big, are you in trouble of losing your house, because nobody's going to come near you, they don't want to be seen at your table. But Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, and housing help, and I know the state's been putting out a lot of things on social media, and I retweet those and repost those, show those and stuff about help getting in a house, or staying in a house, in your home.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're doing quite a bit. I know the mortgage money is gone, and that was a boost for some people, but we didn't make that train.
Yeah.
But there are some other things that we can do, and I agree that we need to, to do more outreach and, and publicizing SNHS and what they can do, and with their partners, not all on them, because they have limited staff as well. But, yeah, so, the one-on-one on PAC 14, or something like that, and, and some of the other call-in radio stations, and maybe some outreach tables at a different events. Excuse me, tomorrow night would be a perfect opportunity, but that's pretty short notice, it's a national night out. So, okay.
I know when they first came on board, Salisbury Housing had brochures that the churches-
Yeah.
Could you grab your mic?
They had brochures at churches, and each, some churches have display tables-
Yeah.
-as you walk in. I thought that would be the way, and then naturally, Delmar, now, Cheryl, you could get on TV, I'm quite sure they'd welcome you. But I think the churches have a multitude of people that they see, that someone may know someone in that same situation, can grab that. But I think they need to do a, Neighborhood Housing, along with you, need to do a, another PR in the newspaper, in both newspapers, now we have Salisbury Independent, and we have the Daily Times, and maybe even get in the Salisbury University paper, because people, they're giving out free, people go to the restaurant, they need those papers. So, you might want to do that, again, because some people may have forgotten Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. And, it's still here, going strong, but, you know, like you said, people forget what it is. And you might even put them in the banks. People do banking, another avenue of getting the word out.
Yeah, and I will say that your local banks, their approach, as opposed to your national banks, is totally different.
Sure.
They do absolutely, within the guidelines of what the federal regulators will let them do, they do everything they can to prevent somebody from losing their house. Because, in most cases, they know the people they've lent the money to, and they're in the same community, they go to the Little League games together, whatever the case may be. So, they take a very different approach. And we've kind of seen that the marketing that is the most effective, is the marketing that is not direct to the consumer, but it's a place where they can see it, like a social media or a talk radio, where they can see it and they can get information. The churches are a great place as well, you know, and that seems to come through the clergy or the pastor, because they talk to them in confidence. But it, it's, it's a situation we've found a lot of times, where people are very scared to voice that they have an issue.
Yeah.
And in some situations, they wait until it's too late. And the longer they're in that process, the more difficult it becomes to get them any type of real help.
Yeah. I know the banks are required to send notification of other options and, and everything, but you hit on it, I think, is that anything that looks like it might be related, they don't even open it, because they just can't face it, it's overwhelming.
Yeah, and what's really, really important in all of this, is the state of Maryland adopted a mediation policy. And that can be extremely helpful for preventing foreclosure. But the mediation policy also comes in a packet, that's a foreclosure notice. And it's in a 200-page packet, and it's one page. So, you're, and the consumer has to pay $50 to file for it. So, most consumers, you know, they get the 200-page packet from whatever bank it is, they see it, yeah, it's gone, they throw it out the window. So, even that is such a huge educational process, because I've been in foreclosure hearings, where the judge sides with the consumer, because the judge is neutral in a foreclosure case, and they side with the consumer from a standpoint of, well, yeah, the consumer has done everything the bank has asked them for, the bank has just not complied with their requests, so therefore, we're going to grant them another 180 days, whatever the case is, to try to figure this out. That's so important, because if they miss their window for mediation, they don't get it again. And sometimes, that's the difference of somebody losing their house and not losing their house. So, that's, again, that's a huge educational piece.
Okay. Mr. Heath?
Is it not in the best interests of the bank to keep the people in the houses, paying for the houses?
That's a million-dollar question.
Yeah.
You know, it, the, there's so many things that play into that, who owns the loan, number one, and in most cases, if I'm talking to Bank of America, Bank of America does not own the loan. Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, they own the loan, or it's within a pool of investors who own the loan. So, that, it, it just all depends on, is there mortgage insurance, what is the backend of the loan structure? From a standpoint of, if the property goes to foreclosure, and they have to take it back, and go through the court system in Maryland, financially, will it cost them more money than if they figured out keeping that person in the house? Absolutely. And also, if you look at a short sale versus a foreclosure, you know, the bank taking less money, based on today's market value versus what they lent on it, versus it going to foreclosure, I'd say about 98% of the time, they will save theirself more money in the long run of doing a short sale versus a foreclosure. But, at the same time, when you're trying to convince or negotiate this process, you're talking to somebody in California, or wherever they are, who has no knowledge of Wycomico County, and that's why the consumer needs to advocate in their corner, because it is such a difficult process. If they try to go out of the loan, their success rate is very low.
Mr. Heath, did you have anything?
Just one, one comment. When, or question really, how often is this information updated, annually?
As far as the DHCD reports?
Yeah, the report.
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Yeah.
So, we should have the information up to the last quarter?
Yeah, and Jack, you can go on DHCD's website, and get it all the way back to quarter one of 2009, and then going forward, every time they publish it, you can get it, because they put it right on their website.
Great, thank you.
In terms of next steps, advertising, getting the word out that SNHS is there to help keep you in your home.
Mm-hmm.
But in terms of the, the homes that are already in foreclosure, that are already vacated, I know you didn't get to look at that, but do you know if, of any other groups that have maybe looked at ideas for helping to get those back on the tax rolls back in occupants?
Yeah, and, and that's an excellent question. In some cases, we've been able to track people down, and we've been able to do a short sale, or a deed and loan foreclosure, because that's better in the long run than a foreclosure. There are a couple initiatives out there, one being the SUN Initiative, and a couple of other nonprofit initiatives, where they essentially will buy the property, and try to rent it back to the homeowner, or turn it into a rental property below market rent, fix the property up. That is a difficult, because it has to fit in a very small window, because you then still have to convince the bank to agree to whatever you're, and trying to convince a bank to let a purchaser rent back to the person who owned it, becomes extremely difficult. Now, that has since changed a little bit, and they, they have gotten better about agreeing to do that. If you can track the homeowner down, there are still a lot of options for them, rather than just straight going to foreclosure, it's just a matter of getting to them and tracking them down. And the reality of it is, is we can reach those people, if, from a standpoint of if we have good data, meaning when someone's house is filed on foreclosure, it goes on public record. If public record has good data, we can generally track them down. So, that has worked, and we have done mailing campaigns where we have, you know, we have sent, you know, mailers out, and we've sent information out to people who are 60, 90 days behind on public record, and we've gotten a very good response rate out of that. And a lot of people, like you said, have already vacated, and they're like, well, I've just, I'm done with it. And then we educate them on, well, actually, it may be more beneficial to you to try one of these options, rather than just letting it go to foreclosure, and the potential ramifications of what might come with that down the road. So, yeah, absolutely, there, there is options for people out there like that.
Okay. Now, you said we have done, are you talking about the Prince George's Task Force, or are you talking about locally, the Coastal Realtors?
and try to rent it back to the homeowner or turn it into a rental property below market rent, fix the property up. That, um, is it difficult because it has a fit in a very small window? Because you then still have to convince the bank to agree to whatever you're and trying to convince a bank to let a purchaser rent back to the person who owned it becomes extremely difficult. Now, um, that has since changed a little bit and they they have gotten better about agreeing to do that. If you can track the homeowner down, there are still a lot of options for them rather than just straight going to foreclosure. It's just a matter of getting to them and tracking them down. And the reality of it is, is we can reach those people if, from a standpoint of if we have good data, meaning when someone's house is filed on foreclosure, it goes on public record. If public record has good data, we can generally track them down. So, um, that has worked and we have done mailing campaigns where we have, you know, we have sent, you know, mailers out and we've sent information out to people who are sixty, ninety days behind on public record. And we've gotten a very good response rate out of that. And a lot of people, like you said, have already vacated and they're like, well, I've just, I'm done with it. And then we educate them on, well, actually, it may be more beneficial to you to try one of these options rather than just letting it go to foreclosure and the potential ramifications of what might come with that down the road. So, yeah, absolutely, there there is options for people out there like that.
Uh, now, you said we have done, are you talking about the Prince George's Task Force? Or are you talking about locally the Coastal Realtors or are you personally or?
Um, we have personally done it. Um, I've worked on a couple pilot programs with Treasury, Bank of America, Fannie, Freddie, where, um, we try to reach out and convert as many people over from foreclosure to not foreclosure. Um, I know, I know SNHS has done some outreach. You know, the state, I know, tries to do as much outreach as they can based on funding. So, you know, the thing about it is, is that they're getting hit so hard from so many different directions. Um, we've kind of found that you kind of have to send them a certain type of marketing piece to get a response. Because they're getting so much sent to them at one time.
And not much of it is good, so.
Right, or not much of it is what they wanna, yeah, exactly.
Is there, um, a role that we should be playing in in that or can facilitate, help to facilitate that? The success of that program or is it other, beyond the advertising of SNHS? Or is that the the best way for us to help?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, implementing something on city and county websites as kind of an information and kind of linking to them is a huge thing. So that, you know, that might get, you know, picked up on Google keywords when somebody's looking online for help. And then also, one of the things that I thought was a brilliant idea that came out of one of the meetings is, you know, trying to put some information on the water sewer bill. Because people are gonna open that and actually read it. So, you know, those are two things that as municipality, you guys could help us with that we think would have an impact and potentially get a response.
I wonder if we could, um, maybe even partner with Delmarva Power and put an insert in their bills, something like that.
Sure.
Particularly if, for people who may be, we don't have to know who they are, but if they're delinquent on their electric bills, pretty good chance they're a delinquent on other things as well and may be in that that situation and we could catch them a little earlier because those kinds of things start to fall behind before the mortgage falls behind.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's one or the other.
The gas company as well, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe partnering with, um, all the utilities to help get that message out.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a quick question, um, these figures, and you use the two zip codes, two one eight oh one and two one eight oh four. That includes all the people living two one eight oh one and two one eight oh two.
Yeah.
So technically, um, our foreclosure rates could be more than, this is the total county foreclosure, it's not the city.
Yeah, and.
Well, it includes some, yeah.
And becau-
Includes the city, but does not, it includes the city, but it also includes the the county two one eight oh one and two one eight oh four.
Yeah, that's correct. And because we are a small area, it would be, it would be too hard for them to get good data on separating the two. And frankly, you know, like a national servicer is not gonna know the difference between Salisbury City and Salisbury County.
Because like you were saying, water and sewer bills would only go out to the people in the city.
Yeah, yeah. So that's one of the things that we thought, that's a grassroots effort that that potentially that word of mouth could kind of spread that, hey, there is something that's out here. And and frankly, the the stigma has gone away from, like, before, people would be like, you can't let your house go to foreclosure. Now, it's kind of, people are like, no, we'll let it go. And the more foreclosures you have in the neighborhood, the more apt somebody who gets in trouble is to say, I'll just let mine go too. Which affects everything because it affects our tax base, it affects the quality of the neighborhood, it affects blight, yeah.
Everyone else.
And I can tell you now that I also work on the other side of it directly with the Department of Housing. When the Department of Housing goes through a process and they can't help somebody and they have to foreclose on them and it comes out the other side and I have to retail and resell that property. In most cases, appliances have been stolen, if there's copper pipe, it's been stolen.
That's right.
Property's been vandalized, so the actual, besides it selling for a discount, it's typically in a, in a really bad condition. So that, again, affects the equity of people around it even more.
And the way our appraisal systems work, it goes by
Right.
like homes sold in the neighborhood recently and so every one of those that goes, even if it was short sale, but certainly under foreclosure that has become blighted, just brings everybody else's property values down and makes it harder for them to stay in their home, so it's snowballs.
Insurance costs and it just has an all-around bad, bad spin to it.
I mean, I think the bright side is, we certainly are coming out of it. It's it's still prevalent, but we're certainly coming out of it. As the real estate market improves and you see property values rising more, that will help affect, because if someone has equity in their house, they typically can sell it if they get in trouble. So that's a positive. A lot of what we're seeing is the reality of what happened a few years ago. Because it does take a significant amount of time to foreclose on somebody in Maryland. But the, also the reality, it is still a problem and it's still prevalent in our area pretty, pretty significantly.
Do we have stats regarding the housing cost range and new construction versus retail, um, resale? And socioeconomic trends within, within the areas?
So I will just tell you from my own personal experience, um, new construction is probably a very minute number, like probably less than five percent. I'd say a, a twenty to thirty percent number is the not seasoned investor, but they got in when the market was high, they tried to be a landlord or they tried to flip property or whatever the case is and the fallout from that. And really, the rest is the homeowner that got a loan they didn't understand, lost her job, got a cut in income, whatever the case is. You know, divorced, there's so many factors that affect, you know, foreclosure situation. But I would say predominantly in this area, it's the actual homeowner that's gotten into some type of financial situation that's changed since they took the loan out. That's put them in a foreclosure situation.
They could afford it when they went in, but then life happened and now they can't.
Right, or they didn't understand the loan they got.
Or at least they were told that they could afford it.
Right, it was a balloon or, you know, interest rate or whatever, whatever the case was, they didn't understand it. And, you know, the fallout from that was the equities decreased, their payment increased. Depending on what, because interest rates are down, but depending on what, some people got into some crazy loans. So there's a, there's a lot of factors that go into that, but predominantly, it's the homeowner that got into some type of financial issue.
Any other questions? Mr. Heath?
No.
Thank you very much for your work on this and for the the feedback. We'll digest this and be in touch if you can help anymore, but we think that you need to pick your brain a little more.
Absolutely, thank you guys.
Some great ideas, thank you.
I think there may be, may be some other avenues to to promote and promulgate this information. For some reason, the school system comes to mind, but I'm I'm not sure what the county might do to, to help us along with that.
It seems like the utilities could be a wonderful partner in that because they can tell also from their accounts whether they're owner occupied or rentals.
Can they?
Yeah, usually, because they'll ask you and a lot of times your deposit will depend on whether you you own the home or or not. So you, and who the contact person is, if, they can usually tell from some criteria. And maybe not all of them, but I know some of them, they they do keep, like the power company, they would be able to tell, so.
I think that should be, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think that should be part of the addendum when someone is actually signing for a mortgage that if you get in trouble, here are the things you can do, here are the places you can go, right up front.
Yeah, but the, the problem is, what if you're in the house for ten years and those places aren't around anymore? The names have changed or or, uh, you can't find that paperwork ten years later. So, I mean, it's all well and good and you don't go in thinking you're gonna get in that situation.
At least you know that something exists that's that's out there, yeah.
And I, but I'm sure in that packet of papers that you sign, there probably is something in there, but whether that, when you get in that situation or whether that's, uh, coming to mind or not, I don't, I don't know. All right, well, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, we have Pearl Housing, is that correct? I'm saying that right now, thank you. And Crawford Tyree?
I go by CJ.
CJ, okay, thank you. I should have asked you that ahead of time, too.
Sure, no problem.
Yes, we do, I think so. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
I will ask that you try to be mindful of keeping close to the microphone so they can hear you.
Can you hear me? Well, thank you for having me here today. Uh, my name is CJ Tyree, I'm with Pearl. And we are in the early phase of a real estate development project. Basically, um, west of West Road, north of Chippewa, south of Queen Avenue, to do some single-family home development. So, um, I I gave you a package here and I'm not gonna follow it exactly, but it it, I'm gonna walk through a little bit of who we are, um, what we're looking to do here. Um, and again, we're very early on in the process and there's several steps along the way that I'll talk about that kind of make or break where we go with the project, but, um, you know, always wanna get out and communicate as early as we can to to get input and to talk about our project to to make sure we're doing something that's good for the community. So let me start with a little introduction of Pearl. Uh, we are a Midwest-based real estate development firm. Um, we do mostly multifamily and some single-family housing uh, in a seven-state footprint. Uh, Maryland is our third most active state and we have done some projects not far from here. We've, we did a project about two or three years ago in Cambridge. We did one, um, probably four or five years ago down in Somerset. Um, and two years ago, we did a project in Anarondle County that's probably most similar to what we'll be talking about today for this site. You know, we were built on analysis, transparency, commitment to the long-term viability of a project. I'll talk a little bit about the financing that we use for these projects and why we are committed to the long term. We, we basically are guaranteed to stay in the ownership structure for about at least fifteen years on these. Usually, we stay in longer as well. You know, just a little more on the background of Pearl. We, uh, we're a for-profit company, but our founding owners are from a nonprofit background. So a lot of what we do has that kind of nonprofit mentality. We, we, um, are very much interested in the neighborhood we create, the community we're in. It's not, you know, we don't build houses and walk away. We are looking at rental project here. And so we, we are committed to staying very involved in helping create that community. We'll form a resident council, we'll have community space, we'll have tot lots, we'll do things to try to create that community environment wherever we go. And I'm not gonna go through all of these, but in your package, you'll see some pictures of of projects we've done and, um, some write-ups on some of those. Uh, and and part of the emphasis there, again, you can read these, um, on your own and even the banner across the bottom is some pictures of projects we've done. But one of the things I wanna emphasize is the quality of the construction and the quality of the product that we build. Um, again, the financing we use, um, has very high building quality standards, um, in terms of green standards and sustainability. So I'll talk a little bit more about that when we talk about this specific project. A few pages in, you'll see, we're looking to do sixty-four single-family homes. Uh, they will all be three-bedroom units, um, somewhere around thirteen seventy-five, fourteen hundred square feet. Uh, this is very much working-class neighborhood. This is, um, uh, again, I'll talk about the rents and the rent structure, but, um, we, we have in-unit laundry, we have patios. If you flip a couple of pages, you'll see a site plan that was previously approved. I believe it was in oh eight, maybe, somewhere in that timeframe, two thousand and eight. Blair Ranier was the developer when this was approved. We are purchasing, uh, he has ninety-five lots approved, we are purchasing sixty-four of those. Um, and in a minute, I'll explain why we're only purchasing sixty-four, not all ninety-five. But I actually wanna get to here, some pictures of Oakwood family homes. And this is actually the exact product that we would be building, um, in this neighborhood. So, again, these are in the neighborhood of fourteen hundred square feet. We would have, um, sixty-four units, uh, ten of which would be accessible for persons with disabilities. So there'd be ranch floor plans with wheelchair accessibility. The other fifty-four would be this two-story, uh, single-family home. And one thing I just wanna point out about the streetscape here, most of these, actually, all of these floor plans are identical, but what we try to do, again, in creating more of a neighborhood feel, you'll see we have trees out front, we mix up the color palette, we mix up stone and brick to even the roof pitches there to to create a little bit of distinction between the homes. So it's not kind of all one product there. You know, we have small front porches, we have packed porches on these. A few pages in, you'll see a picture of a clubhouse. We do a, a clubhouse, um, that has a fitness center, you know, a small fitness, a couple pieces of equipment in there so people can come work out. We have a community room where we hold, where we'll host, uh, specific events. But residents are also, you know, welcome to rent that out. We have a computer lab in there, so if people don't have access to a computer internet at home, they can come here and have access to that. Again, helping create that, um, sense of community. Again, there's a few more pictures here of, uh, other fitness spaces we've done and community rooms we've done. But I wanna talk a little bit more about the financing of the project that we're doing here. What we would utilize to do this project is a tax credit program administered by DHCD. Um, the application for that is September eighth of this year. Uh, we would find out probably in January, they don't tell us exactly when, but probably in January, if we win that financing, um, we would look to start construction the following fall, so I'm saying September of sixteen. Uh, take about a year to build those and then lease them up over the next six or eight months. So this is a relatively long-term timeline here, but again, we wanted to come talk to you guys early in the process, describe what we're doing here. And, uh, you know, again, get feedback and input. So to talk a little bit about the tax credit, I'm not sure if any, if you are all familiar with the the way the tax credit program works. I know there are some other, um, properties here in Salisbury that have utilized this in the past. But basically, we, the state administers a program, it's a federal income tax credit. But the Department of the, or Department of Housing and Community Development awards these tax credits to specific projects. It's really an incentive for private investment into affordable housing. So, um, we would go out and sell those credits on the open market, um, to, you know, pick on Bank of America. But as companies like Bank of America chase, uh, insurance companies that buy these credits and essentially buy, uh, ownership of the property for that fifteen-year hold period. So, um, it, you know, most of the money for this project, probably seventy to eighty percent of the total development cost is funded from that tax credit program. So, um, in exchange for that, in exchange for us getting these credits, we agree to restrict the rents at the property to people making between thirty and sixty percent of area median income. So in in this county, that's, I'm gonna round numbers and say between twenty-five and maybe fifty thousand a year. So we're, we're really talking about what we call workforce housing. This is a lot of times teachers, firefighters, young professionals, this is people starting out, looking for a nice, high-quality housing, uh, that aren't ready to buy a home necessarily or for, you know, somebody, they went through a foreclosure and they need to get their feet back on the ground. That's kind of the target market that we're looking for, for this, this project, um, and this type of product. Uh, the rents would be, you know, we'd have some units on the low end in the mid-four hundreds, up to about eleven hundred a month. And again, I'm gonna round numbers there. Um, but it's a specific formula that we have to apply, uh, and again, exchange for having received these tax credits. And we would, like I said, we'd have a wide variety of incomes here. So, you know, some of these units, I think it's seven, would be not income-restricted. So anybody could walk in the door making any amount of money and rent seven of these homes. Uh, we'd have some at the very lowest incomes and then a lot kind of in that middle range. And again, the idea being that we're trying to foster that community, that sense of, um, you know, home. And in the long run, we're trying to develop people into homeowners. So, you know, we, we do provide a supportive service package, so we would, you know, be doing educational programs right on-site. You know, in some cases, that includes some after-school stuff for kids and a lot of cases. And we tailor these programs to who are the tenants in the neighborhood. So, um, you know, they'll have their own resident association that will have input on what types of programs they want to have. But we do offer, you know, financial literacy, homeownership programs, home maintenance programs. Again, we're helping to develop people into homeowners in the long run. And like I said, this, it's all part of what we do here at the project to to get that financing, basically, to make the project work. We do have, you know, again, this is a competitive process. So like I said, we'll submit an application September eighth. Uh, we will find out again in January-ish if we, if we win that financing. If we win that financing, you know, it's full steam ahead. If we don't, we're probably done with the project. So we have a lot that hinges on this application. And it is a competitive process, so typically about one in three applications gets awarded. process. So, typically about one in three applications gets awarded. Um, again, this is what we specialize in. So, we have a pretty good feel for what it takes to submit a winning application. Uh, we think this project is viable and is competitive. Um, you know, a couple of things that, we did have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Stevenson and some of the other city staff, um, and talk a little bit about that as well. And there are some ways that we can help in the competitiveness from the city and that's part of what we'd be asking for. Um, you know, this project, when it was being annexed, had an annexation agreement that included a contribution to affordable housing. I think it was in the neighborhood of $2,000 a unit. Um, and we would be looking for a waiver of that fee. And it's not necessarily for the economics to us. It's part of the competitive scoring process with the state where they're looking for local buy-in and, and local support in the project. So, um, we, in, in conversation with, um, the city, thought that that would be a logical place to look because that fee is to provide affordable housing that we're actually providing already at the site. So, we thought that that maybe made the most sense in terms of local contribution, but, um, there are other ways to, to get there and we're certainly open to, you know, what makes the most sense from the city's perspective, but that was the one that maybe seemed the most logical. But, um, again, in terms of the competitiveness, in terms of the ability to move forward with the project, um, something along those lines is what we would be asking for. Again, not necessarily for, you know, our profit incentive, but in terms of making the project more competitive to be able to move forward with it.
Okay. So, the first step, correct me if I'm wrong, is, uh, you're looking for a resolution from the city saying, uh, resolution of support for the application?
Yeah, that requirement actually went away about a year, year and a half, I guess. We don't actually need the upfront resolution of support anymore. Um, what we really need is a letter for our application that says, you know, pending final approval, here's the way we can support this project. You know, we, we'd be willing to waive these fees if the project gets financed or something along those lines. Um, and then the second, kind of related to what you were talking about, this, the DHCD, when they receive this application, will send a letter to the city saying, "We received this application. Um, do you support this project? Do you not support the project or just don't reply?" Um, if you send a support letter or don't reply, that's great. If you send something saying you don't like the project, you don't want it to move forward, they take that into account when they are deciding whether or not to move forward, find, funding the project.
I think, um, I'm familiar with this project when Renier had it. And we did have, uh, community input, uh, because, um, they were partnering with, um, uh, the group that bought, built the Westbrook Commons. And they wanted to build on the Chippewa side, the apartment, three-room apartments. And the, the homeowners, uh, in North Delano and South Delano did not want that, um, affordable housing because they were, uh, thinking of the safety issue and security. Um, majority of the people that do live in that neighborhood, homeowners and members of my church. And we met twice with, uh, Mr. Renier. He sat down with the homeowners, um, and they squashed the, the, the apartment, three, four apartment idea. Now, the single-family homes, I think, would be more reasonable with them because it's similar to what's being built on Queen Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Because they, they do have like split double homes, if you notice the type of housing. And then you go back at Sassafras, which most of them are homeowners. Um, so, I don't know if you've contacted anybody in, in that area, the community. Um, but they've had the hearing, but I don't think he would be having to do the affordable housing contribution anyway to the affordable housing because, uh, Blair was talking about homeownership, where he would be contributing to the affordable housing. So, you're doing, now the question I had for you, if someone moved into the, the single-family home, would you be turning them to rent, could they buy one of those properties rent to own?
Yeah, the, the intention is, um, that again, we have to, because of the, this is a federal program and has very specific rules, we have to keep it rental for 15 years. Beyond the 15 years, uh, DHCD asks us to keep it affordable rental for another 15 years. Well, we have talked to DHCD and we've actually done this in our project in Cambridge. Um, they basically will re, take away that second 15-year restriction if you sell the unit to the tenant. And, and that is our intention here. So, um, you know, we would, part of our program would be again, that educational component. And then we would try to set money aside to, in that 15th year, kind of clean up the unit, replace some stuff that might need replaced so that when they take it over, um, they would have a, a, you know, a, a unit that's not, you know, falling apart. And the, the maintenance has been kept up on the, the unit. And that's definitely our intention.
And you could partner with Solomon National Housing because they're in that area also.
Right.
The education.
So, um, I have no problem with, as long as it's not a, an apartment complex. Because I was looking through here, I said, "Oh, my God, that's a real problem."
Yeah. Well, and, and that's really what we-
And it's got a garage. This, this right here.
Right. That's the product we'd be doing here. And, and just, again, our company, we do kind of all of it. We'll do townhouse. We'll do apartment building. We'll do single-family-
At least detached.
They are detached. And that's really, again, what we try to do is fit the product to the neighborhood that we're in. So, as you mentioned, there's a lot of single-family homes on all sides of this, and that's exactly why we picked that product for this neighborhood.
Yeah, this area is, uh, looks like about 99% single-family homes. Now, is the, uh, this is a little bit before my time. Is this the wooded area that stands-
Yes, behind my church.
Stands north of Chippewa Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, which raises my question about, uh, open space and, uh, outdoor recreational facilities at the site?
Yeah, and so, you know, I know, um, the site plan as it's approved does have some kind of conservation areas in it that we would try to incorporate.
It's like seventh-generation copy here or something.
Sure, right.
A little tough to read.
Right. Um, and, and also, like I said, we do, you know, build a community room or a community, uh, building that we usually have like a tot lot there as well, you know, with the playground area. So, it's not, I'm not going to say we're going to do a massive open park or green space that's, you know, huge, but we do typically include, um, like I said, a tot lot and some green space. And I do know, I think it's immediately south of Chippewa, there is a park right-
There's a playground, yeah.
And there's a playground at the church.
And the village playground.
Yeah.
But in communities like this, you know, little pocket parks are, are very highly valued by, by the residents.
Yeah, absolutely. So, in terms of a pocket park, yeah, we would definitely include something. Uh, and usually, like I said, right next to the community building, we typically put, you know, a playground area.
And there'd be no shortage of trees there to keep, I hope.
Right.
Sure. Yeah, no, and it's definitely our motivation incentive to keep as many as we can. Obviously, a lot of, you know, that is road and houses. So, you know, certainly in the middle area in particular, it's going to be hard to keep them, but on the outsides, we would keep as many as we can.
Yeah, I'm looking at the picture in the packet and, of the existing, well, the, the existing project that they did. And you can see that they've kept a, a good bit of forestation-
Some mature trees there, yeah.
In the, uh, right.
What's the, what's the entrance?
In the background.
I think before it was Chippewa.
There, yeah, there are two. And so, actually, the map you have there, I did, um, we talked to, actually, um, I forget the gentleman's name at, at, at planning, I think.
Moses.
Yeah, who had said that he, we would still want to have the two access points for fire and police.
Chippewa, right.
Yeah, so Queen and Chippewa. So, where this red X is, is what we were originally not going to buy. That's probably going to move toward the, I guess it's northwest there. So, we would still have both access points. And where we would not be purchasing land now is probably in this top-left corner.
Okay.
So that we'd still have the, the through to both roads.
Okay, I'm confused. Which one are you purchasing?
So, originally, the red was what we were not purchasing. We were going to purchase all of this.
Uh-huh.
In feedback with the staff, um, we want to, they asked that we, you know, keep both access points. So, instead of not buying this, we would probably not buy something in here. So, again, our agreement is to buy 30, or I'm sorry, 64 of the 95 lots. And so, something in this area that equals 30 is what we would not buy.
Okay, so you'd kind of buy down the middle instead of a corner?
Yeah, kind of across the bottom so that we keep that access point.
I got you.
Would you be buying behind my church?
Um-
No.
The church is right here, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would be buying here.
Mr. Heath, did you have something?
Yes, um, first, I, I think the, a couple of impressive numbers. The, the number of less than 1% default rate is a pretty good track record. Uh, we also said that, uh, one out of three applications is accepted. What's Pearl's batting average?
That's a good question. Um, it is much higher than that. Uh, I don't actually know an exact number, but again, we, we typically, and, you know, I can actually get pretty specific. In Maryland, they're, they have a 200-point scale that they score these deals on. Um, they just changed that scale two years ago. So, two years ago, the cutoff to win was 174. Last year, it was 176. We think this deal right now is a 177, 178. So, depending on if that line moves up or down or, you know, how that happens, we think we're just above what would have won the last couple of years. Um, you know, we try to, to eke out every point we can. Our intention over the next 30 days here is to try to get another point or two and try to get closer to 180. Um, so again, we know we're pretty competitive right now. Um, you know, some of that is dependent on, you know, the conversation we had about local support. So, um, I, I don't know an exact. I know we're above one and three, but, um, like I said, this particular one, we feel pretty good about right now.
Okay. And the other, uh, the other comment I would have is, I think, looking at the presentation, the, the packet that we received, um, that would do wonders, I believe, for, uh, the Shields area. Um, I think it would fit in and certainly raise, uh, raise the, the look of the neighborhood and, and encourage people to do the same. I think, uh, I, I'm encouraged by it.
Thank you. Yeah, and, uh, actually, since you touched on it and I, it's a favorite topic of mine, the less than 1% default rate, this program started in 1986 as part of the tax reform in that era. Um, since then, it's created about two and a half million new housing units. It's, the program's attributed with creating 90,000 jobs a year between construction and management and all the different components. Um, we would certainly be hiring local subcontractors. Here, we have our own contracting firm, but we would hire local subcontractors. Um, Brock Parker, who did this design, worked with us on our other project down in Somerset, you know, in terms of local knowledge of the process and what works in the area. That's always something we're looking for is the local hiring and the local participation, and we would certainly be looking to do that. Um, but yeah, the, you know, the history of the program is because you have a state agency saying, "Here's all the things you need to do," watching over your shoulder. And then you have private investment from a Bank of America or some corporate institution. You have them looking over your shoulder. Um, you have a lot of oversight over, a lot of eyes watching over these deals. Um, and they're a little bit flipped of a typical real estate deal. A typical real estate deal, you take as much debt as you can and put in as little equity as you can, which, when something goes bad, the equity guy can walk away and not be harmed too badly. The bank's kind of stuck on the hook. This is kind of the other way around where equity is making up 70 or 80% of the deal. The debt is very minimal. And so, the debt, you know, the equity provider would never let the debt guy foreclose because he put so much money into the deal already. So, um, in terms of the stability these bring, um, the foreclosure rate is very low. The, the vacancy rates on these, again, with the, the lower rents is always very low. Usually, these have significant waiting lists, um, particularly with the single-family home product. Um, so it is, it can be a very, you know, stabilizing and, and it can help create new development in an area because you see these nice homes that are fully occupied. And, and because you have people there that, you know, at low vacancy, people tend to stay longer, especially if they see that purchase option at the end. So, you, you create that community environment. You have the classes. You have the community buildings. So, they tend to be very nice functioning neighborhoods.
Yeah, thank you for answering my last question, which is local labor.
Okay, yeah.
We're on the same page there, Mr. Heath. Uh, I'm certainly a fan of that. That pumps the money back into our local economy. That helps those people be able to afford, to live in those places.
Absolutely.
And others. So, that is, um, very important. I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. Did you have something else?
I have one last question. Um, when design comes around, do you follow SEPTED guidelines, crime prevention through environmental design?
We, uh, that specific term doesn't come to mind, but we definitely, like I said, we're, we're utilizing a lot of, um, programs that, that I think influence that. So, again, we'll have to follow what's called enterprise green communities. And not only is it talking about the green features of the homes, we have a higher insulation and better windows and, uh, you know, Energy Star appliances, but they also talk about, um, the access to the buildings, that it's safe and secure and that it's, um, accessible for handicapped. And so, there's that enterprise green communities list of things that we do that does include some of what I think you just talked about, but not necessarily maybe in the term you used.
Our police department and fire and, uh, other agencies go through SEPTED training and it, uh, enables them to identify shortcomings in environmental design, which includes shrubbery, lighting, um, roof, roof lines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, um, which all come to, uh, support better crime prevention. So, if you could have a look at those guidelines and pass them on.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Yeah, definitely appreciate it. And, um, like I said, a lot of the site design itself will be working with, um, Brock Parker. So, I'm sure we'll, we'll run this by him as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson?
I just want to make sure I understand the council's desire here. When I briefed the mayor on this proposal, he was in support and also supported the idea of waiving the, um, contribution for affordable housing. Uh, if we do that, it will require action by the council to modify the agreement. So, we'd have to go through that process. The adjusted inflated rate is $1,933 per unit. The 64 units equals $123,712. So, that would be the city's all-in. Um, next step would be to get, uh, something to the council to modify the agreement. And then from there, I guess you'd be looking for your, uh, letter of support for the project. So, we'd have to move either rather quickly to make the commitment to waive the affordable housing requirement or just stipulate in your initial correspondence that that would be the council's intention.
Okay. Does that, uh, changing the development agreement, does that have to go back through planning and zoning or, or any of that? Is that just in?
The question was asked whether or not it would have to go back to the planning commission. I don't have that answer as of today, but, um, Mr. Holland is shaking his head no. So, that's a no to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, what do you need from us in terms of, is consensus enough to allow the mayor to, um-
We'd have to bring the agreement back, modified agreement back to the council for approval.
Right, but I mean, as far as the, him getting the letter once that, uh, modified agreement is, is done?
That's suitable.
Or can we do-
It's the consensus of council.
Okay. Can we do, is there legislative action required for that, uh, change of development?
Yes.
Okay. So, we could do a resolution to, say, even though it's not required anymore to, to allow for the signing of the letter and then you'd have a formal-
Monday.
I mean, if we're going to do it at the same time, it's going to take legislative action anyway.
Yep. We could do that.
Okay. Um, how long do you need to get that to get in?
I have that ready by, for next week.
For next Monday? Okay. Is there council consensus to move forward with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, we will put that on the agenda for Monday?
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Zach? No. Okay. Still nobody here from the county fair, correct? Okay. Moving on to the acceptance of the portable stage donations. Jennifer Miller, Mike Holt, I guess, uh, you don't look like Jennifer, so I guess we just have you here today, huh?
They look nothing alike, Jennifer.
Nothing like-
You'd be surprised.
And you could distinguish.
Well, I'm sorry?
I'm glad you could distinguish.
Yeah.
Me too. Uh, Jennifer's on vacation, so she asked if I could, uh, run the ball for this one.
I was all for his benefit since he can't sit.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, Joey Wilkerson's a local resident businessman. I'm sure you all know him. He's, has a portable stage he had, uh, bought, uh, several years ago and they've used it in some other, some of our city events. Um, he had stored that in a rented storage unit. Um, he would like to donate that stage, uh, to the city for its use as needed in, in city events as we move forward. I think at one time, we had a, a little stage over there by parking lot 10 that had been used at one time. That was, uh, I think they use it for certain events. And, uh-
The wooden stage.
Yeah, the wooden stage. And it wasn't really movable. It was kind of stuck there and it was gathering a lot of trash and everything. So, decision was made to tear that down. So, this provides an opportunity for a portable stage that can be maneuvered with different events that we have down, particularly downtown, uh, to provide, uh, enhanced use for bands and, and events. So, he's, he's proposed to donate that. Uh, so we've got the memo and then a, a resolution to accept that donation.
And we do have a storage place, please?
Um, we are in debate about the storage location with Mr. Stevenson. Um, one of the things with the, the stage itself, it folds up, if you can imagine, like a ping-pong table on rollers. So, it needs to be on a concrete floor and the wheels are real small. Our position, we don't have a lot of room at Public Works that has a flat concrete floor. What they had done was they had arranged for a towing company that came and picked it up, loaded it on one of their car carriers, and then brought it unloaded. Right now, the stage is stored in a parking space at the downtown parking garage undercover. So that would allow it to be just wheeled up the street and assembled downtown a lot easier without having to deal with specialized moving to do it. So, that's kind of where we're at.
How many parking spots is it taking up?
At the most, it's two. And what we were proposing to do there was, from security, would put a security fence around it.
That's, that was my question, because that's what I understood that it was.
We had thought about trying to store it over underneath at the reservoir at the park plant, but the stages are too high when they're up and our garage door's too low.
Right. And then you'd be moving it back and forth?
Again, you'd have that issue.
Right.
So Jennifer and I, we're going to probably do rock, paper, scissors to decide where it goes.
Okay. I know that the stages have been used quite a bit and, you know, sometimes I've wondered, okay, where do they come from and how much is that adding to the cost of being able to do a downtown event? And would we be able to do more, would some of the things that we've done in the past that have gone away, maybe it would work if little things like that didn't have to add to the cost? So, I'm supportive of doing that as long as you have a place to store it without having to climb over it every day or anything like that.
Right.
Others?
Do you have a routine maintenance plan for it, or are we going to use it till it falls apart?
We'll have to learn. It didn't come with an operator's manual in terms of that. But, you know, if they, again, it looks to me, the best thing, you have six folding ping pong tables. So they'll fold down with a flat wood table and then you have the mantel seat. I think it's a matter of just keeping the joints there. And the fact that it's going to be stored undercover, it's not going to be stored outside.
So adequate lubrication and occasional paint job.
Yes.
And the pieces hook together like the, like when you have a row of chairs and how they hook one to another to another so that they don't part while somebody's playing on it?
And if you noticed in the resolution, there is language there that anybody that is using it has some liability waivers and things like that, recommendations from legit.
And they would have their own insurance as well to have an event that would utilize that?
That is correct.
What about staffing to move it? I know that we do a lot of in-kind setup and help with that kind of thing, but...
Yeah, well, what I would, my bargaining with Jennifer would be if she stores it, we'll bring the people to move it for her.
Okay.
We're going to rent it out?
You see, I'm not weighing in on any of that.
I'm doing my sales pitch here too.
We won't be renting it out, will we?
No, at this point, there were no plans to rent it out. I think there would be concerns with that.
Mr. Heath, did you have any questions?
No.
Are you supportive?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is the application for program open space funds at Waterside Park. Ginny Hesse. Welcome. Please join us.
Good evening.
How are you all tonight?
We are requesting that you accept the funding for program open space for basketball restoration over at Waterside Park. The amount of the funding from them is $90,000. And then it's $10,000 in-kind.
And that's going to be labor? What are we doing?
With the in-kind would be the labor.
Labor.
The signs, you know.
And this is, I didn't get a chance to go by and see, see the shape, but I'm sure that it's...
Correct.
So this will be?
Yeah, we've asked for this funding for several years.
Right. So this will redo the whole thing?
So this will essentially mean taking out what's there and putting in something?
Resurfacing it, yes.
It's in really bad shape, I know that. The fencing, will that be, stay in place or is that going to be replaced as well?
It would have to stay in place. We didn't get the funding for that.
I have a quick question. If there's any funds left, if you think there's any funds left, the playground?
Your microphone, Ms. Shields, pick it up.
If there's any funds left, I looked at the playground and it needs really revamping. And the main thing I saw, because a lot of kids are using it now, you know, the stuff that they put around the playground equipment, it needs probably more of that kind of playground stuff that they use. So if they fall, they...
On the ground, the rubbery?
Yeah, the rubber, whatever you use for the playground, it's grass growing up in it where the little things are and the swing and the, wherever that jungle gym thing is. That, and then I suggest, and I'll bring that list down to Debbie and them, if there's any other funding left, open space money, I have a list of things that the playground needs.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're on a tight schedule, our budget on that.
Always. I don't know if that, that surface, that rubberized surface can be repaired or filled? It's usually a continuous pore. Oh, it's just, there's nothing there?
I mean, I don't know what it is. I looked at it the other day.
The engineered wood fiber is the stuff that they put under it. It's a mulch, but it's a, goes through a certain certification for use under play structures.
So it's not like what's at bounds?
No. We use a wood fiber there and we're actually looking at teaming with the county and the Board of Education to do a joint bid so we can get a really good price on that and possibly attract some local companies that will certify that.
Nice. Thank you. And there are other grant opportunities for playgrounds and that too. But thank you for bringing those up. Mr. Spees, did you have any?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Heath, did you have anything? Any questions?
I just, there's a, there is a significant need to do that.
I agree.
Oh, you bet.
I agree.
Just for the council's information, we were actually approached by Lowe's recently and they were looking at a couple of locations in the city of Salisbury where they could make some improvements to parks or playgrounds. Waterside was one of those potential locations. We've not heard back from them yet, but we anticipate them having at least a willingness to help us there, so.
Okay.
Do you know the extent of that would be?
No, sir. I don't have a dollar amount or anything yet, just a willingness to participate.
So maybe Ms. Shields' list could make its way to you as well and that could be part of that discussion?
That'd be fine.
I think that would be great if we could do, basketball court is fantastic, but if we can do more than, that would really, really help a lot.
Okay.
I'm supportive. Sounds like council consensus to me. And so we will move that forward to, what date will that be, Mr. Stevenson?
Three weeks. That's the 20, forgive me.
Twenty-fourth.
I can't see that. Twenty-fourth.
Okay. Consent agenda, okay with everyone?
Yes.
It's perfect for me.
I know, it's early. I'm fine with consent agenda on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we do the same with the stage?
Yes, that's fine. Good call.
It's perfect for me.
I know, it's early. I'm fine with consent agenda on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we do the same with the stage?
Yes, that's fine. Good call. And next up is the EDU capacity fee waiver for Pohanka. Mike Holt, welcome back. Long time no see.
And I'm here as myself.
Yes, thank you.
We have an opportunity request that came from Pohanka of Salisbury. They have a property at West Gordy Road and Windsor Road and Northwood Industrial Park that they would like to develop. It would move as a development project within two phases. What they're looking to do is relocate approximately 25 employees from their detailing facility, as you know, they're on the strip there in the county, into this new facility that will handle getting their cars washed, taken care of, detailed for sale, and then also have storage of new inventory that comes in. So with that, is a car wash as part of the second phase development and there is water usage there. The car wash will have recycling capabilities. They need to buy capacity and that comes to about 4.8 EDUs. They've asked under the capacity fee waiver ordinance to get that waived. We note that Pohanka is 16 years in Salisbury and they have about 290 employees in their business. So, we're anxious to see some of those employees relocated into the city. We've reviewed the ordinance in terms of the different standards that they've got. They are within the enterprise zone and meet the criteria that are outlined in the ordinance.
The 25 positions, I have a couple of questions. The 25 positions, they are existing positions with them now, but they would be relocated to be in the city?
That is correct.
I'm trying to think through, and I'm almost wishing that Mr. Corddry was here at this moment, but I would assume that that would add to our income tax, but that seems like their payroll's all being done out of there. I'm not sure how you break that out, whether they're in the city or not. So just, that's just rumbling around in my head, but that's why I wanted to clear that up. But for this purpose, adding new jobs is really relocating those jobs from the county to the city. Is that correct?
Yes, she, when I talked to Sandy with Pohanka, she at this point said that they're relocating those 25 jobs. Now, the opportunity certainly may be there now that they're expanding the type of detailing opportunity that there may be new jobs, but she couldn't give me a definite that there'd be new employees at this point.
Yeah. I have one more question and then I'm, then I'm going to invite you up because then maybe we'll hit both. Well, if you want to come up and join us here, that's fine too. And then we'll, I didn't realize that.
Who's getting Sandy?
Sandy, I would know.
She said, Ben, can you make it? I said, yeah, I'll make it.
Well, she was, last I talked to, she was in Honolulu or something.
Yes.
We could be so lucky.
Well, just for that. My other question is about the EDUs and the 4.8. I know that we had a situation with another car wash that was, we reduced the EDUs because of the reclamation and then the equipment didn't work quite right. Now, that was a public car wash that anybody could come and use. These are just cars that are being sold or serviced at one dealership. But just wanted to, to expand a little bit more on how you calculated that 4.8 versus what we saw, I think ended up, it should have been like 10 or 12 at the other car wash.
The, from information that is provided in terms of what they did, again, I think the big difference between the two is you had a commercial car wash where this is a smaller type facility that they've got.
Yeah.
Sure, absolutely. If you could tell us your name, that would be great.
Ben Cam. I've built for Pohanka for 30 years and I've built all his buildings from the beginning of all to all of the green ones that we built. The car wash that we're using is in a Bellinger system and it has a three-compartment tank, which uses 60 to 70% of the reclaim, which goes through a pre-filter, which separates the sand from the water. Pretty much, nobody wants to invest that kind of money's in a quick spray or whatever. So the reclaim is truly that percentage. And what we've done, we've even put some of the meters on there, just testing it for ourselves and have found that the units are pretty energy efficient with that type of water reclaim system. And same way with the electric and everything else. It has a six blower system that has a step-up generator on each one of the motors so that the motor kicks in on one phase, steps up to another phase, and then they, they're fully enlarged, where you're not using like 300 amps all of a sudden. You start off with a 50-amp circuit that stages it and it goes. So all blowers don't come on at the same time. So it's pretty efficient.
Okay. That sounds similar to what they're looking at for the bus wash at Shore Transit, where the high-end?
A lot of them are the Bellinger systems, which have been in through the system for a long time. And the other thing, I talked with Scott Crabtree, who is one of the majority owners of Pohanka. And he said at this facility, he said, make sure they understand, we are relocating some of the people, but this type of facility with the details, and they're selling now 675 cars last month in one month. And he said, we will be hiring new people. And they've been a great employee. As I said, I started off with a handshake deal with Jack Pohanka 30 years ago and have never signed a contract with him on anything that I have built for him.
Now, this is a property, thank you. This is a property that we recently did some rezoning for, to allow the cars to be parked there when they were unloaded. Is that correct?
Storage. Remember you said it's storage.
For the storage of the cars?
Concerned?
Is that the same piece of property?
There was an interest in Pohanka originally using it for storage.
We had to make some kind of language change or something we did with zoning.
I think it might have something to do with it.
Yeah, I think it was just a text amendment.
Yeah, I think it was.
Because the storage was not permitted, but it was modified to allow it, but it is the same property.
Okay. So, that's not an issue, but right now, it's just, since there's some kind of a building on it, is there water and sewer service there already?
Right now, there's no building there.
There's no building? Okay.
A building would be structured in the first place.
It sounded like maybe, but, okay.
That's more in the phasing.
Okay. So, and then you will be, but you won't be washing vehicles there until that building is there?
Until the initial building is built.
Okay, that's the first phase of it. My question is, if it's going to be city water and then we've got the reclamation going on, so not all of that is being discharged back out? I guess eventually it would be. But I'm thinking back to the ordinance that we passed in terms of not charging both water and sewer based on the water that's coming in if all of it's not going back out, but I guess eventually it would be, so.
Yeah, eventually it'll all be cycled over, so it'll, we'll all go out. As opposed to like a lost type thing that Pepsi utilized that ordinance for.
Right.
In terms of product going out.
Okay.
So, yes.
I was just thinking through that, whether that, something needed to happen in the building phase to meter that or whatever, that would be a good time to do it.
The number of EDUs that we evaluate after we get records of actual usage and if there's a need to adjust the number of EDUs.
That's correct.
And we have, we'll have no capacity issues with this at all?
No.
But we do have a used water tower, if you're interested.
Now, what happens if we do, if we approve this for 4.8 out of the EDU bank? And then they need more? We have to go through the whole process to increase this? Or is this an up to number or?
Well, they would have the option of either paying it.
Correct.
Or they could come back and ask for more, if there's more available.
If there's more available and if they would qualify again, because most of this is being, well, some of it anyway, because they're bringing new employees into the city and because some of those qualifications might not be met once they're already there.
Well, I think the way I'm looking at it is that they're, the reason for the waiver is what is this process? If there needs to be an adjustment, the basis for granting it at the ordinance is still there. That hasn't changed. It's just an adjustment of it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that if we thought it might be more, that we put it at that mark, an up to or not to exceed?
Yeah. I think we're comfortable with the number of EDUs going forward and again, evaluated. I mean, it's all going to be a function of the number of cars they have in. How many are washed, any rainstorms you get, you've got to re-wash the cars. All those kind of factors go into it.
And there are good months and bad months?
Yes.
Or not as, not as good months. Ms. Shields, Mr. Spees, anything?
Other than, I'm looking at the map here, but what, what will the footprint be for this facility?
You've got it totaled on there.
Here, I can show you.
Great, okay. And I'll see it again in planning and zoning, but just have a look at it now.
The first phase is detailing building. And then we're doing curving and sidewalk around with the building. And then the second phase is the modification, car wash, redevelopment, and then the additional parking for the inventory.
Okay, but there really will be no retail use in this building?
Strictly, yeah.
Well, by retail, do you mean that someone could say, I want you to detail my car? Or you're not selling the cars out of there?
Right. It's just strictly Pohanka's. It wouldn't be where you could drive down the road and, hey, I'm going to drop my car off. It's strictly their car.
Right, you'd have to go to Pohanka. Ms. Shields, you said you had something?
No, no, I said it goes back.
All right. Mr. Heath, did you have anything, questions or anything?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So I'm hearing consensus from council, and I think we can get this on.
I'm sorry, we're having a.
Oh, sidebar conversation, sorry. I looked over and just saw, no, head shaking.
It was all business.
Okay. No, that's fine. I just was confused by the no. Okay, so.
You can get the 24.
The 24.
This is a resolution, though, right, not an ordinance?
It says 24.
Ordinance? Okay, so.
Is it an ordinance or a resolution?
I think it's, I thought it was a resolution.
I thought it had an ordinance in the packet. I'm sorry, it's a resolution. One reading.
Okay, one reading. Consent agenda, or do we want to, no, let's not. Let's actually have an opportunity to point out that we have the EDU bank, and that we're utilizing that, and it's bringing business into the city. All right.
Excellent.
I would ask you to look at the heading on that ordinance, or that resolution, I'm sorry. I'm sure you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Go to the old version.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
We keep testing you to see if you're hearing what you're talking about.
Once, once I miss something, and look at. All right, any other comments? Mr. Heath, did you have anything for the good of the order?
No, I will see you next Monday.
All right, wonderful. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shields, Mr. Spees? Okay, one thing, tomorrow night is National Night Out in Salisbury City Park near the bandstand, and the hour's five to eight, correct? And we hope that you all join us. It's a free community event, and we're giving away a lot of bicycles and some other things. A lot of free events and information for community from the community, and I hope that you all join us. Thank you. We are adjourned.